Good evening. It's 6:02 PM and I'll call this June 12th, 2018, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the first order of business is approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the open meeting of May 29th, 2018, and the executive session minutes of May 29th, 2018.
So moved. Second?
Motion being seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Next order of business is the approval of the warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve the debt and interest warrant number 1057 for eighty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-three cents, school warrant number 1058 for fifty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty cents, general warrant number 1059 for one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and payroll warrant number 25 for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
So moved. Second?
That motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. We have one item under financial items and we have an invoice from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for work done on the, is that the Commons project? Is that what we're doing? The North Common Project? And it's an invoice in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. I just need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second?
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any other financial business that we have? I will mention again, though, for anybody interested, if you go to the website, the town's budget is posted on our website. So ahead of the June 22nd meeting, you can review all of the budget items, what's been requested, you can follow the history, you can see what the Finance Committee recommends. There's three sheets on there. One sheet is the general town's budget, one sheet is the school's proposed budget, and one is a pie chart that we developed showing division of where all the money's going. Oh, was it? So check back. Thanks. Is there any other financial, do you have any financial stuff you wanted to talk about? So, old business. First order, I guess, under old business is Chris Dumphy with the North Common Street Project. Did you have a...
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board for having me up here this evening. As you know, I meant to be here a couple of weeks ago, but I had some car trouble. So here I am. I'm here to provide an update regarding the grant that the town has with the Department of Housing and Community Development, okay? And the grant was for improvements on North Common Street. Now, if you don't mind, I'd just like to take one minute to give some context for people in the audience and as well as the board to let you know, you know, where this came from and potentially where it could lead. So it was a few years ago that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission assisted the town in writing a planning study. This planning study evaluated the condition of infrastructure throughout this entire neighborhood, what you folks locally call Little Canada. So we had an engineering firm. They tested all the water pipes and they examined them, the sewer with smoke testing and all the streets, the sidewalks, the drainage systems. So this was all done as part of a planning study, and this is with a grant that you were part of with the Town of Spencer. So that was a few years ago. So then we used that planning study, okay, there's the planning study. We know this area has lots of needs in the area of infrastructure. Then we used that planning study to pursue a design grant, an engineering design grant. And that was a grant that you entered in with the Town of Warren, a joint application. And this is the state program, the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. They constantly, from year to year, change the structure of the grant application, what makes you competitive, what, you know, what works against you. It's a competitive grant application. So in some years, it worked to your benefit to go into the grant with another community, you know, for bonus points, a joint community application. And so you did with Spencer. And during that year, you also got some housing rehabilitation done as part of that particular grant. And the same with Warren. When you entered in the grant with Warren, you got some housing assistance and you got North Common Street engineering design plans done. So then we used, then they changed the structure of the grant application again. They actually made it a little bit easier for a town like North Brookfield, and they eliminated the bonus point structure. And we went ahead and it allowed the town the opportunity to pursue the full breadth of the application as a single community, so which allowed you to apply and receive funding for your single community, North Common Street Improvement Project. So, you know, in years past, to be competitive, you had to have multiple projects in the grant. Sometimes you had to participate with other communities. But in this particular grant that we're operating under right now, the FY 2017 North Brookfield Community Development Block Grant, you applied and you received funding for the full comprehensive improvements to North Common Street. So working with the townsfolk and the engineering firm, Stan Tech, we indeed prepared those design plans. And then we bid the project a couple of months ago. We identified a low-qualified bidder, Piapi Construction. And not too long ago, the town made the award to Piapi Construction. And now here we are getting ready to actually start physical construction work after a few years. So this particular project is gonna install a water main throughout the full length of North Common Street from the intersection, was it church, is it the bottom?
Grove Road.
Grove up to Mount Guyan, yeah. So the full length of the street is gonna receive a brand-new water main in the lateral connections. Now, I wanna make a distinction here. This is a good thing for residents to understand. The town and the water district and as part of this grant, we're gonna be able to do the water main and what we call the laterals up to what we call the curb stop. That's the shut-off valve typically located somewhere midway between the house and the water main. So the water main and the lateral to the curb stop. From that curb stop into the house is the homeowner's private responsibility. But now's a good time to consider getting it done while that contractor's in the area, they, you know, they could probably get it done at a lesser value than if they did it at some other point in time. So residents that are in that area, contact the water district if you want more information about getting your private water service line done from the curb stop into the house. I mention that because we know through the planning studies that some of these lines are very old and should be replaced. But that particular piece is a private responsibility. So that's the water. The other portion of this project is going to replace a portion of the sewer, basically on the most upper part of the street. Because through previous investigations and information provided by the wastewater plant in the sewer department, we determined that most of the sewer line was in good shape. So we're just doing like the upper half of it, going to be replacing that portion of the sewer line. We know that the drainage is in really poor condition throughout the area, but I don't want people to get the idea that we're gonna be able to make improvements in drainage throughout the neighborhood. No, but we are going to make improvements to North Common Street. And hopefully in future years, other areas could be looked at in terms of drainage. So we're gonna install new catch basins, new drainage lines on North Common Street. And finally, once all that subsurface work is done, we're gonna replace the road surface, rehabilitate the road surface, we're gonna rehabilitate the sidewalk, and we're gonna introduce granite curbing. The highway gentleman here thought that would be a great idea, and whenever you can afford it, it is a great idea to install granite curbing. The downside of that, of course, is, you know, you may or may not have funding to make similar type improvements to other streets as you advance into the future. A foot of granite curbing installed is like fifty dollars. A foot of asphalt curbing is like six bucks. So it lasts forever, though, right, Jason?
Do you know how far up you're going?
Uh, we're going all the way. The plan's presently called to go all the way.
The sidewalk and the curbing?
Plan's presently called for that.
Okay.
There was some discussion, as you know, from attending, that, you know, the contractor thought maybe a better way could be identified, but currently the plan's called for the...
Sidewalk all the way up?
Well, not all the way. That, there's like a...
It stops about, just where the...
There's about a hundred feet, yeah. That last little rise on...
There was never a sidewalk?
Basically, wherever there's sidewalk, we're gonna replace in kind. We're not introducing new sidewalk. So there's one tiny portion at the very top end of the street that will not get sidewalk. Because the street's too narrow, can't actually have room for a new sidewalk and maintain a reasonable width of that.
There was never a sidewalk.
And there never was a sidewalk to begin with, right? You know, I gave you the budget again here on your first page of this. What shows you what you had for grant money, what the contribution will be for the town. The contractors are planning to start next week. I sent notices, or we sent notices to all the butters in the area, and we got returns from most everyone. There was one person that kinda gave a response that they're not really too interested in the project, but they did not provide an address. I have a feeling we'll find out who that person is when the project starts. They didn't express why they may be against the project, but based on their comments, they're not too keen on it for whatever personal reason. So we'll find out who that is, and I suppose you might as well, when the project starts. All this work's supposed to go largely in the town's right-of-way, but, you know, there are portions of the project when you do this that, you know, like you might have to disrupt a driveway apron to do the sidewalks, you know? Or you might be a little loman seed. So, you know, there'll be a small overlap from the public and the private. Largely, it's intended to be improvement of the public right-of-way. So that's the essence of the project. Anything to add, Jason? Entertain any questions?
Did we take care of the tree problem and the bush problem that there was?
Yeah, that's in the, it's in the town right-of-way. The bush problem, we spoke to the owner, and we think that we can move over the sidewalk enough so we won't have to impact those shrubs. The large arbor bites that appear on the corner down there across the street from the park, we thought they might be problematic, but after a closer look, we feel that we won't have to impact those at all.
About the tree up?
The tree, well, that's still a work in progress, but it's in the public right-of-way. It's gotta go.
Yep.
It's just a matter of, you know, just making sure everyone's aware it has to go. You know, Andrew's not here. I have a contemporary that works for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. He, he used to work with us at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Andrew Lowe, and now he's with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And I know through information I provided him, he assisted with your FY 2018 CDBG to do some various work. And it's right around this time of the year that we find out if the grants are funded. So keep yours to the ground. You should probably hear any day now, over the next few weeks, whether that grant Mr. Lowe wrote was funded and intended to continue. I think there was maybe a design piece or a planning piece, Leslie, in another neighborhood. So similar type of infrastructure analysis and improvements hopefully can occur with CMRPC leading to help.
They were looking at Willow Street, I think.
Is that what it is?
The next one over, yeah.
So that's all I have for the board. Do you have any questions? Anyone? All right.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next up is the senior center policy. We had the draft. It's been out there for a couple of weeks anyway now. I think it's good in its present form with that one change that you made.
Any.
Any, yeah, because I had said any further down, so she just made it consistent. And then the attachments, that's the use policy and the indemnity agreement that people have to sign.
I think it's her form that she has people fill out.
Was that done in conjunction with the Council on Aging?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would keep those as attachments to the policy.
Okay.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve this policy and make it effective.
So moved. It's second?
Right. Motion made in second. Any further discussion to be had on it?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, so that one passes. The next is the sick leave buyback policy change. So we have a few options to choose from if we're gonna go to the twenty percent of a set amount of days rather than pay out the ninety that costs...
It should probably say with ten years of service, too, like, oh, it does, yep.
So this is starting with ten years of service. Oh, yeah, I have it in there, minimum of ten years.
Right.
So it's the same.
Yeah, it used to be fifteen.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it's currently fifteen.
Yeah.
But that's for a hundred percent of the ninety days.
So instead of using the ninety days that we currently use and paying a hundred percent of ninety days, which this year is costing us potentially forty-eight thousand dollars, we would change to with ten years, with ten years of service, you would get twenty percent of your sick leave up to a set amount, and I guess we just pick one of these amounts.
Yeah, somebody had asked what the school does.
Yeah. But we're not gonna make a whole bunch of different categories. It's just...
No, pick one.
Employee, employees, so...
Right, pick one, yep.
We just gotta pick one of these.
What am I talking, this here?
Yeah. So we currently pay ninety days of sick leave at a hundred percent. So we're gonna start paying twenty percent of a set number. So instead of ninety, we'll go to a hundred and twenty or...
One fifty-five, twenty percent.
Yeah.
And that'll carry all the way down, whatever you pick.
Whichever one we pick. So it'll be twenty percent of a hundred and fifty-five days, twenty percent of a hundred and twenty days, twenty percent of a hundred and forty-four days. Any preference for...
Hundred and twenty. That's what I wrote.
Yep. Yep, so I was thinking, so, good.
All right, so I'll add numbers.
So it'll be with ten years of service...
Yep.
If you retire and you give us twelve months' notice...
Yep.
You will get twenty percent of your sick time up to a hundred and twenty days.
Up to one twenty days, okay. Okay.
Is that paid over time or is that a check?
When they leave, when they retire.
It's a check.
Yep. Okay, so I will entertain a motion that we approve the sick leave with those dates and amounts.
So moved. It's second?
Motion made in second. Any further discussion be said?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that one's set. Did you wanna talk about the littering bylaw?
Sure.
So... Anybody who's participated in the townwide cleanup knows we usually pick up quite a bit of litter that's scattered around town. And anybody that walks on the back roads or even on Main Street, you see litter in all kinds of places. And we have, on occasion, had the opportunity to see or find trash bags that are just tossed off into the side of the road where people didn't wanna bring it to the transfer station or, for whatever reason. And in those, sometimes they find the name of the person who owned the trash. And for instance, there was a bag from a McDonald's. The police noticed a, every so often, there's a bag of McDonald's refuse on the side of the road, and they stopped and they picked it up, and it had a timestamp on it. So they went and checked the video camera at the McDonald's that it came from and figured out who was tossing the trash on the side of the road every night on their way home. And we do have a littering bylaw. However, it doesn't have any teeth. It doesn't have a fine associated with it. And what we wanna talk about tonight is whether or not to associate a fine with that. So I think that if you can catch someone, you know, all the work people do, you know, cleaning up on the townwide cleanup days, and you see people walking around and picking up trash, I just think that it's, it'd probably be a good idea to be able to find somebody for tossing a bag of trash on the side of the road, you know? If you can figure out who did it.
Like a community service type fine or a money fine? Can we have them clean the roadway or...
Well...
Fifty bucks for the first time, a hundred bucks?
I think we're limited by law, up to three hundred dollars or something like that.
Yeah, I found that out on the fencing thing, so... Yes?
Hi, Susan Lyons, Bell Road. We do have a real problem on our section of the street, and I can certainly sympathize with people that, you know, walk out and see the McDonald's bag every day and stuff like that. And I have actually done what you've, what you've said because I wanted to get in touch with the person who consistently was leaving refuse at the bottom of my driveway and let them know that I knew who they were and didn't appreciate it, who would like them to stop. And that was pretty startling for them, just to, just the fact that we were, you know, that I was able to do that. Use some of my old investigative skills. So, but anyway, I think that as a deterrent, you should, you should impose a very steep fine. Because I think once the, it's sort of the same analogy that we had for how we were gonna handle issues at the town beach. Once word gets out that North Brookfield isn't gonna put up with you throwing your trash down on the streets, it's not gonna work for us, and if you do it, you're gonna get whacked with a three-hundred-dollar fine or whatever the maximum is. And that's the way it is. And once people realize that they could end up losing money out of their own pockets by, you know, by doing something like that and doing that to both our, you know, unloading up our town and our environment, I think that that sends a message that we are not gonna put up with that.
You think we should go with a fine right away, or like you said, you, you talked to this person and...
I did, and, and I, and, and he, you know, I mean, he apologized, you know, profusely, but, which was fine. I, I think that if he had been told that I could turn him in and he would be, you know, stuck with a pretty nasty fine and that I had the evidence showing that it was him, I think that that would have been a shockwave through the sky that would have been huge. But, I mean, we could do something like maybe, you know, you're told once, don't do it. Second time, you get caught, that's it. But then you've got a matter of record-keeping. Who's gonna keep the record of, you know, you've been slapped once and...
Yeah, 'cause we can go up to a certain amount.
Yeah.
So I think you could do a graduated thing, like the first offense, a hundred,
Yeah.
second offense, three hundred type of thing without running a...
Would the police have that information? I mean, would they be in charge, I guess, of, see, that's the thing.
That's the other thing we'd have to work on.
Being an eye on it.
It would be like writing a ticket, you know? You know if you're in the second offense or not.
Yeah, we could have, we could have, we could have trash tickets. I mean, I don't know, something like that.
The police actually, we do have the non-criminal disposition tickets, yeah.
Yeah, we have, yeah, they do have tickets and, Trevor?
It really is a, a bad idea.
So Trevor Brusso, North Brookfield Board of Health. It's important that the audience that's watching this and the folks in here understand that, you know, this takes away resources from the town when people dump couches, chairs, mattresses, because then the highway department gets the call, they pick it up, they bring it to the recycling center, and all that stuff, you know, gets charged by weight into the dumpster. Like, that's how we're, that's how we pay for that pickup. So the people that are using the facility, the townspeople, we're all paying for somebody being very selfish. So I'm all for, I'm all for finding people the first time, no warning, here you go, here's your ticket, and, and the story. The, there may, shouldn't there be already illegal dumping statutes?
We have, we do have a bylaw that talks about it, but like Jason pointed out, there's no teeth in it. There's no fine associated with it. So when it was done, there's no...
Yeah, I thought the Commonwealth might have.
Yeah.
Oh.
Some highways.
But if we wanna charge over and above, I'm all for it. I mean, you know, like I said, the highway guys are picking it up. Highway guys are bringing it down. That's money. And then, and then to get rid of it is money. And so it is an issue.
So there's, there's actually, this is a nice segue. There are other facets to this. And one is the trashcans in town, okay? I noticed a couple of weeks ago that the trashcan that's between the town offices and the old pizza place is gone.
I did, too.
Okay? And then I went by again a few days later, and it's still gone. And this time, in the flower pot or barrel in front of the town offices, there was litter. So I picked it up and I tossed, I threw it away. But I assume the reason that the trashcans are gone is because people are filling it with their trash and not just regular coffee cups, scratch tickets, usual stuff that you're walking down the sidewalk you need to dispose of.
The car wash was having an issue with that recently. I noticed that when I went in to get my car washed, all the barrels said, "Do not bring your household trash here." So, you know, there, there's a problem there, definitely.
'Cause I think, and you can correct me, Jason, if I'm wrong, the trashcans, people know when the town picks up the trashcans to bring them to the transfer station is on Wednesday morning. So the night before, the trashcan fills up. Okay? Well, that's, as Trevor said, that's our resources being abused by people that don't wanna pay for a sticker, you know, or, or just go to the transfer station. So...
Pardon?
Yeah, I picked up a lot of trash myself, and that's just on the townwide cleanup. That goes in my own bag that I pay for to toss. So I'm all in favor of whacking them with a maximum fine right off the bat. Pretty disgusting though.
Yep.
West Brookfield Road, that's been a problem for years. They throw big cans and stuff. I always end up in the driveway, you know, and they throw, what they said wrappers. I don't know where they get a hamburger from, but they throw it out the car door. I don't know why. People just can't have a trash bag in their car and throw it away at home. But I think you should have a fine, definitely.
Anybody here brave enough to give an opposing vote?
I can't go buy your house now and throw my trash.
Yeah, no more than I can.
The only other question that I have on this is, what do you do about a kid? And do you, do you, you reprimand the kid? You rep, you find, you find the parents?
Cuff 'em and stuff 'em, right?
And what about the age? Does the age matter? Does it like up to age ten? You know, from twelve to, twelve to eighteen? The kids should know better than to litter.
Make it simple.
You know?
Yeah, just apply to everybody, and I think, I think you'll find under the statutes that everybody's entitled to some form of appeal, some form of due process whenever they're given a, a fine like that, no matter who gives it. So I think that's something that could probably be taken into account by whoever the Appeal Board is that we set up. Yeah, so it has to be, we have to draft a general bylaw change and have to be voted on at town meeting.
At a town meeting, yep.
I'm here to help you with that.
With drafting something, yeah?
Yeah.
Cool.
It'll be typewritten, right? Not like John with his.
Well, I'm in this century, so I'd be happy to help. Something that's legible.
You can read everything I put down, so I guess we just need a fine.
Uh, yeah, I mean, most people here are, are okay with the highest fine that we can assess, right? Three, three hundred dollars, I believe.
Well, you'd be more apt to, you'd be more apt to collect a hundred.
Amperer wrapper equivalent to a bag of trash?
Yes.
Well, I mean, if you're looking at it as a, as a misuse of our resources, even in picking it up and addressing who threw it out.
I understand, I'm just saying that maybe you'd like to consider a graduated fine for quantity.
But the litter is litter.
Litter is litter.
Litter is litter. Yeah, so if you get whacked once, you're not going to keep doing it.
The problem for me in that is where do you set it? It's kind of like an arbitrary threshold, so.
Can I say we hit them for three hundred bucks and keep turning on those lights?
So no, no one thinks a warning first would be?
No, 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 no.
Or a smaller fine? Just go right to the top?
Because if they drop a couch off on down the road.
It's been done, yeah.
Yeah.
That, you're going to get more warning?
That's true.
And as you said, if there is an appeal process, if someone's twelve-year-old kid drops an hamburger wrapper, you know, they can deal with dealing it. His parents really will be the first.
Okay, so this will be your, you'll regret volunteering after this, won't you?
I know, I know. I can feel it already.
So, yeah.
I'll draw something up where I'll look at some other towns and what they do.
Yeah, draft us something and send us some language. Do you want to motion now? Do you want to have her draft something and we'll, we'll look at it and?
Yeah, we don't need to vote on having her do it, right?
No, I don't think so.
If she can do something for the next meeting and bring it, we can discuss it.
Just check our bylaw first and see if it just needs a little tweaking and?
All right.
Yeah.
I'll throw in a monetary amount, how's that?
You can't go over three hundred bucks.
That's fine.
I'll throw it up in the bill, sorry.
Throw it down on the sidewalk, we'll get it.
Yeah, I'll just throw it right in there.
All right, good. So we'll get working on that as a general bylaw.
Sue Lyons to draft, I'm just writing it down. Sue Lyons. No.
Yeah, he's just looking to avoid the clerk having to do it, that's the.
I've been the clerk for the last few meetings, it's not an easy thing.
Okay, the next one is the, it's not on your agendas, but we have a letter from the fire department here or the fire, what is it, the building committee? Fire Department Building Committee to put the new building up. And they need a letter of support that'll go to the state Senator Goby's office, I guess, to, is Joey here?
He's behind the post.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just to go to Ian, right, to support for that?
It's going to be used for the whole process.
The marker for that money and stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's going to be used right through her office up to the governor's office.
Yeah.
Just a lot of support that the, clearly officials are behind us on our endeavors.
Because I, I think it's good as written, I've read, I've read it personally, so I'll just read it out so everybody can hear it. It's, um. Well, you have it addressed to Dr. Chief Holloway.
Yeah, well, that's coming from you guys.
From the selectmen too, Joe.
That letter was coming from your office.
Oh, okay. All right, so you don't want it to, Anne Goby?
I helped you put it together.
You don't want us to send it directly to Anne Goby, you want it to you?
That's going to come to me and that's going to be used for the office.
Do you need multiple copies?
Not necessarily.
Okay. This letter is to affirm the continuing support of the Board of Selectmen for the construction of a new fire station and for the efforts of the Fire Department Building Committee. The Board is aware of the many inadequacies and serious safety issues at the current fire station, which was constructed in eighteen seventy-eight. The existing structure does not meet required NFPA standards or several important OSHA requirements, which are intended to safeguard fire department personnel. The Northbrook Field Fire Department provides an essential service to the citizens of the town and we remain concerned about the many deficiencies at the current facility. To assist the committee in its planning, the Board of Selectmen is prepared to make town-owned land at Forty Grove Street adjacent to the Police Department Building available for the construction of a new fire station. This should considerably reduce the cost of the project. The Board looks forward to discussing the committee's preliminary recommendations regarding this project and is prepared to provide any assistance needed to ensure the completion of this important undertaking. And it'll be signed by the, the three selectmen. So is there any language in that that you, that needs to be changed?
We've already decided to do, do it next to the Police Department.
Yeah, there was a zoning issue, we can't fit it, we can't fit it on.
That's right, yeah.
School, right?
The homework we did, the zoning to the right of the Police Department on the school street side by the pizza house, doesn't fit.
Doesn't work.
The, behind the police station, so the housing, the doors facing Quavo, that needs the zoning.
Yeah, and that would work better for us if we were going forward with the rail trail thing, so we can use that side as parking and stuff like that.
Yep.
This was all part of what Anne's office and Anne herself asked to prepare ourselves towards the government meeting with the government.
Yeah.
We got that two million dollars that's available.
Yep. So I entertain a motion that we approve and sign this letter in support.
So moved in a second?
Motion moving in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
And then under old business, I just wanted to mention that all three members of the board met with the East Brookfield Board of Selectmen last night down in East Brookfield to discuss the town beach issue and the rail trail issue and how it's going to affect East Brookfield and whatnot. So with the beach issue, I had spoken to our highway superintendent about addressing the erosion. And the East Brookfield Board was not overly thrilled with us addressing that issue. They think it's their issue, so they're going to address it. We're looking into it. Their claim is that they own the parking lot. It was my understanding that the town in Northbrook Field owned the parking area and that they owned the beachfront. But we're going to look into that to address it. And then they made some reference to about how they had a right-of-way and controlled pine avenue somehow. So we'll look into that, but seeing that the highway superintendent is here, we're going to probably put it on you to make sure that alterations to the roadway over there are not undertaken without your approval on it. And I don't want them to alter things because you're responsible for maintaining it, your department, so.
Right, and they are private, right?
Yeah.
Limited.
Yeah, but other than that, it was, it was a great meeting. We discussed the beach issue. What they need from us really is financial support in the form of lifeguards. So I went through the, the finances for the town and we were traditionally giving about eleven thousand dollars to the beach, which was used for lifeguards and swim lessons.
The whole summer?
For the whole summer, yeah, and that was, that's what it was used for. And then all of a sudden, within the last five years or so, that number dropped off to like two thousand dollars. And so there were no lifeguards on the beach. And their view, and I don't disagree with them, is that if there are lifeguards, they are present. Their plan calls for two at a time, five hours a day, is that what they said? Five hours?
Six.
Six hours a day for most days of the week. And with lifeguards present, you're not going to get the people from the other towns. That's historically what they have seen. I don't see any reason to doubt that that's what would happen. So we have seven thousand and some change, I think, appropriated. If it passes a town meeting, we would put that towards the lifeguard purchase of service, hoping that that'll address the problem. Everything else being equal, they'll address the, the water runoff and the drawdown. At, at drawdown in the fall, their plan is to take all the sand that is now washed out into the water and try to bring it back up with the approval and oversight of conservation and see if we can't fix that and get it up and running again. And then with health-wise money, we hope to put a few thousand dollars into, bring it back to what it used to be, you know, a candy stand or whatever the, whatever they used to have there. And swim lessons. They say they have never denied a Northbrook Field resident swim lessons if they apply. The issue is it hasn't been advertised. So to the extent that it hasn't been advertised in the Northbrook Field school system, that it's available, it is available, they will not turn you away. So if anybody has children and they're looking to get them in a swim program, they have assured us that they will not turn you away. Anything else?
I don't think so.
No?
To get the money appropriated for the beach, it has to be voted in at the town meeting because it's a.
That's what we're coming up?
Yes.
June twenty-second.
Looking for seven, seven thousand additional.
Yeah, seventy thousand, yeah.
Add to the twenty-two.
Yeah, it would be seventy-two, twenty-two, I believe is.
So we need support at the meeting to, for the town beach and everything else that's on the warrants.
Do you know a hundred and is that seven thousand whatever concluded in votes and, and your budgets?
Um, I think FinCom just, because FinCom went over some other numbers, they wanted to try to whittle away on other numbers, so I think we're a thousand dollars off on that. Yeah, yeah, they were, they were sensitive to the fact that they didn't want to be seen as agreeing with the Board of Selectmen on everything, so they're, you know, trying to, which is great because that's their job, so. But to answer your question, it's different. And the rail trail discussion went very well. They are in agreement and very supportive of use of the rail line as a rail trail. So they see the benefits like we see the benefits, so they were in agreement on that. Anything else that I missed from the discussion?
On the beach or the rail trail?
Either one, with the meeting from last night. Just the meeting with the, because we'll talk about it.
Okay, no, just that they were in support of it, of both.
Yep. Good.
Oh, he had, he wanted to thank Joe Holloway.
Oh, yeah, he had that down here.
Okay.
Now that you brought it up, Joe.
Behind the post.
In our meeting, they wanted to make sure that we thanked you again for your assistance at Lashway pulling out those stumps that were just under the waterline.
Yeah, so East Brookfield Fire Department Assistant in that too.
Yeah, they said, they said.
I'm going to make a small report on that tonight. We saw that the Lake Forum, you know, I take their board, their Lake Board Commission, one of the members out there with these, I'm going to invite East Brookfield Fire Chief and we're going to go back out to Sonora and show them exactly where it is.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we, we conspired beautifully with that Sonora.
Yeah, well, they were very appreciative of it and they, they made sure that we conveyed that again to you, so. And that, that's good because that goes a long way with cooperation between the towns and anything we can do to try to.
Yeah, nothing else, anytime.
Yeah, and the beach committee, we need a beach committee. We don't have a beach committee any longer and see Susan's hands up.
Can we write, can we write some names in for the beach committee? Well, the beach committee and the rail trail committee are going to be in tandem with East Brookfield.
Right, so maybe we should just make a recreation committee? One for each, yeah. You can't get enough volunteers?
There you go. I'll get some volunteers.
Uh, so I guess the way it's been handled in the years past is that our beach committee would meet with their beach committee in February. They would have, they would develop some type of budget like all the other town departments do and submit it for approval and then it goes in front of the town. That hasn't happened in many years, so they're looking to reconstitute the beach committee from Northbrook Field that will meet with their beach committee and together jointly address the beach. I mean, that's the way to get the money we need appropriated, so to that extent, we're looking for volunteers to serve on a beach committee. Three, what, three, I think it was three last time.
Would you like a motion to appoint Sue Lyons as the chair of that?
No, 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 no. Don't you need, you know, to make sure you have the money and all that stuff before you start throwing names up against the wall?
The beach, the beach committee isn't funded by budget.
Oh, oh, good, that's nice.
Well, it's going to be needed, it's going to be needed going forward because in the next budget cycle.
Do they have a beach committee at all?
They have a very active beach committee and that's the, that's the committee that cleans up the beach every day. There's somebody there first thing in the morning every day to clean the beach up and they do a phenomenal job on the beach, to be honest with you. And it's, it's entirely them because Northbrook Field doesn't participate in that at all, so.
Do they have people that live around that area to maybe volunteer to?
Yeah, I think historically that's what it's been because they're the most closely impacted by it. So we'll see if we can find somebody down in that area to, to, to serve on it. So talk to a friend who can talk to a friend and? Yep. Sounds good, okay. All right, moving on. Awarding of the annual bids. That's just highway, that's the only bid out there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to read these individually or they've already been read? Do we need to?
Be someone recommended choices of life which is cool.
Um, yeah, yeah, true. Why don't you do your, we'll do your, we'll do them together.
This is a quick summary on all the bids were completed through the bid process. There's actually fourteen items here that I recommend. There's only two that I would like to address separately. So the, I'll just read them real quick. Allstate's asphalt got the stone seal, they also got the double sown seal. Palmer Paving Corporation got the, the asphalt bid in place. EJ Prescott got the pipe bids, all sizes. All Construction Services got the excavator rental. Number six, full depth reclamation. I'm recommending Allstate's asphalt only because they're, the, they were not the low bid, let's put it this way. They were ten cents a square yard more than the next bidder. The reason why I'm recommending them is I dealt with the other vendor and I don't want to use their name, but if you'd like to know, I'll tell you. Past experience with the company was substandard in many different ways, so I'm recommended, recommended we go with Allstate's asphalt.
How many bids total did you get on that?
It was only two.
Okay.
So I'm recommending Allstate. I got a quote on a skid steer rental that was through Allstate's, excuse me, All Construction Service. Bond Construction Corp. got cold patch bid. Washed sand was through F T Smith and Bond. One, the picked up price from F T Smith was low and then the delivered price was from Bond Construction. Screen sand was F T Smith. Crushed gravel was Bond Construction. Processed gravel was F T Smith and mass stone. Bank run gravel, F T Smith, washed stone, various sizes, F T Smith and, and Bond Construction. So those are my recommendations. I'd la, I'd like, because we're planning a project in the direct vicinity of F T Smith's gravel pit. Brooks Pond Road, that is, later this year. I think it would be in our best interest to utilize his material rather than just, when we're on that specific project. best interest to utilize his material rather than just, when we're on that specific project. I've had no objections from the other, other vendors, if I were to do that, so it's my recommendation that we utilize his, his facility. He's going to allow us to store material there and take it back out during construction process. So, it's roughly thirty seconds to a minute to get material there versus going to another vendor, which take, would take an hour plus.
And that's for the various materials, right?
Various.
You're needing crushed gravel, then you're gonna get it from.
Right. And, and I, I believe he already has that bid anyway, so.
Oh, it says he at Bond has crushed gravel.
Does both.
Number eleven?
Yep. Okay, but.
That's split?
I believe number twelve is supplying.
Processed, so what's the difference?
He doesn't have processed, so he's supplying me crushed gravel, so.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's it in a summary.
Any issues with any of that?
No.
None, then I want to take a motion to approve the bids as recommended by the Highway Superintendent.
So moved. I second.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I am going to abstain for this. All right.
My, my monthly.
Might as well, while you stand up.
Very simply, it's days broken down into activities for the month of May. Funny how we were discussing the, the trash early, four days were spent doing trash cleanup. That's probably not a real accurate figure. Just a few weeks ago, we, we have a hotspot in town, Heinz Bridge Road, air conditioners, barbecue grills, mattresses, couches, on consistently. And I, my thought, not knowing this discussion was going to occur tonight, literally, I want to buy a camera to set it up, find out who's doing this, and, you know, maybe not find them, but do, like, she did over there, put it on their lawn the next morning, the rightful owner.
There you go.
So, sends a message, but.
The harsh letter.
Anyways, I'm getting off track here. Maintenance and repairs of equipment, we spent fifteen days, that includes both highway and fire apparatus. Ten days were spent patching portholes, there were two days pre-removal and cleanups, typically that's based on storms. One day was spent cleaning catch basins, four days were spent mowing road sides, four days were spent shaping up the dirt roads, seventeen days were spent sweeping, that was our primary focus last month. And we're getting, we're almost finished, let's put it that way. Catch basin repairs, we spent four days doing that, and we accomplished sixteen of them. And then two nights were spent doing crosswalks and line painting. And that's it for the month of May.
So when you allocate, when you say days, that's a day, you come in and you say, okay, today we're doing justice and everybody does it?
No.
Or these like hours that aggregate into a day?
The, these, the crew is split up. I got two or three guys out sweeping, another guy in the shop working on the truck.
Yeah.
One guy patching, you know.
Just an average of.
So it's just kind of an aggregate of different.
I can give you an hourly, hour report, but I get better things.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, because it says days, and I just know how that worked out, but.
Well, there's, there's, we're a, we're a six-man team, and this is being done, that's being done. Parallel, concurrent.
So, what's on the project looking forward list?
I'd like, I'd like, well, you're gonna see, or at least some people will see, the final top course to Smith Hansen, a section, all of Smith Hansen, a section of Tucker Road and Tucker Cross Road, they're gonna put the top code on the, before the end of the month. Trying to take advantage of a good asphalt bid from last year that they will honor.
Okay.
Moving forward this year, Brooks Pond Road is kind of my primary focus, and I haven't approached the board with this yet, but I, I'm going to be up and coming and put this other project to rest, and perhaps move on to Town Farm Road, those are my thoughts right now. Last year, Old Westbrookfield Road and Cider Mill Road were gonna be included in the Smith Hansen project. I stopped that because the bridge on Cider Mill Road is up and coming through a grant, and I thought it would be in my best interest to wait till the bridge is done, so they don't destroy it, for one thing. But it, it actually helped the grant process to go forward not doing the road. In other words, it's worse than it actually is because of the condition of the road, even though it's just the bridge. So, those, those are my goals this year, and I'll be coming forward with project requests at some point.
Great.
So, how do you approach the trash cleanup? Do you do it all on one particular day, or do you store it somewhere?
Well, if, if need be, we'll, we'll store it, but, you know, if it's a sofa, or a chair, or TV, or whatever, we'll, we do have access to, to the dump, off hours, and that, that works out sometimes, or we'll just store it at the highway facility until, but Wednesdays is our goal, to get trash done when, when the facility is open. So Wednesday morning, incidentally, we, we collect the garbage at the beach.
Yeah. So, there we go. We contribute.
And it's usually full of, you know, diapers and you name it.
Oh, yeah.
Which I'm glad they're in the barrel, not in the, in the surf, if you will.
Is a trail cam a good idea to put on Heinz Bridge Road? I mean, is it something that we should look into for surveillance down there, trying to catch these guys?
Sure, but once, once the bylaws in effect, it sounds like we.
Yeah, but you're still gonna catch them.
Right.
That's a.
That, that day, that day.
Yeah.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
With the idea.
You got a trail cam?
I don't have any trail cam, I'll just do a surveillance down there.
She'll sit up in a tree.
There you go. I got a tree stand, I got a tree stand I can lend you.
Here, I have a tree stand. I'll get video and license plates.
There you go.
Yeah, we'll get something. I mean, I have a trail cam that's not being used at the house, if you want to throw it up there.
I, I, they're not that expensive.
Yeah, they're not.
You gotta know how to plug it into your computer and get it out of there, that's the thing, so.
So you don't have one?
I do it the old style. I think it's a good idea if we can, because it'll help you guys not having to go down there all the time picking up stuff.
And it's mobile, if we got another hotspot, we can.
Yeah. We'll look into doing something with that.
Yeah, get something a little higher grade, maybe. Good.
Yep.
All right, thanks. Do we need any, do we need to do anything?
I'd move to accept the highways.
Just accept, yeah.
Okay.
Report for me.
What's your name? One second.
Second.
Motion been made, second, and further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Fire Chief's report. Oh, look at that, we ran out of time.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good.
I'll make it quick. Okay, just going down through the list, the budget update, we're at twenty percent right now with these last couple of weeks going into, finishing out the year, so, but that includes our electricity and things like that, so that's gonna get chewed up. We do have about four, five thousand dollars that I'm holding out onto the last week to use to buy some well, well-needed equipment, such as fittings and things like that. So, we were able to do pretty well at this point, you know, with the budget. So, that's in, that's in good shape, the salaries are all in place, so we shouldn't have to ask for anything.
And I will say that this is the first year in the last, well, at least my three years' experience that you haven't come back, well, the Fire Department, not you specifically, but.
No, thank you.
So, thank you for the good word.
There might be some free cash back in there too, on some of the fire salary, if we don't have anything big burning, doing now, and any big incidents, there might be some money coming back that way. I'm not touching any of those, other than when we did, when we already, we transferred because we knew we could, you know. So that, that's basically it on the budget. Equipment report, everything's up and running. A couple of small things we're repairing right now, you know, some lights and little minor stuff. Speaking of the equipment, the, the boat and the car, I mean, down the lake, the guys were training, doing sonar training last night, and the motor sucked up some mud, so again, our highway mechanic, I'm telling you, the, the cooperation between Jason and, and Scott, working on equipment, has literally saved us thousands of dollars, I can't tell you how much he's done, that, that guy is brilliant mechanic, almost every avenue, electrical, mechanical, you name it. And I hate to burden him sometimes, but boy, you know, he just gets it done. So, he, he's a blessing and.
Working with Jay, take off already?
Jay, Jay's really been easy to work with too, with all our equipment in and out of the parking lot, so. We're redoing the parking lot down there, just so you guys know, in the back of the fire stations, it's always been kind of jammed up, so all the fire equipment's gonna line up nice and neat to come out straight. The boat, the kid's trailer that we have is gonna have a permanent spot safely in the back for the school days that they do. And that boat, the trailer, the hovercraft, the new, the new tank is in from Grafton, it, it looks like a beast, I nicknamed it the Beast, it's got a new motor, transmission, tires, it runs really strong. And again, it sat for a year, and Scott drained all the fluids out of it, all the old diesel fuels like mud, changed all the filters. So, that truck, once we doctor it up, we'll probably spend, you know, maybe a grand on it altogether, but it carries four thousand gallons, and what that means to us is, we don't have a street tanker, we just have a forest tanker. So, with the new run cards, and I'll explain that real quickly, when I get to that, the run cards on how we call for tankers, you know, our town is luckily, we're probably fifty, sixty percent hydrogen, but once we get out of that, then we're relying on tankers, but the way, the way I set up the run cards with the officers is, we've got a lot of water on wheels coming into any second align, which is a structure fire, residential, commercial. But in the meantime, that tanker is also coordinated with the state forest fire control. They wanted a tender in central Mass, and they didn't have a tender in central Massachusetts. So in other words, if you have those, you know, brush fires like we had a year, a few years back in Leicester, went on for three days, it was burning underground and all that, well, this tender would be, they'd asked us to bring the tender up. So, you know, the forest fire trucks carry two hundred, two hundred and fifty gallons, this thing carries up to five when it's in a short run, so we can, we can, ten, probably fourteen, sixteen trucks just sitting there, and they can milk off us. So, it's something that's coordinated with the state, along with us being able to use it. And it is a military vehicle, so we don't own it, it's like the other tanker, and it's like the pickup truck. If we start to have issues with it, expensive issues, it's done, it goes back to the state barnyard. So, you know, there's really no big risk with it, as far as financials concerned. So, the equipment's in good shape, we've been going through everything, the guys have been working extremely hard on everything. The personnel, we're, we're at forty-five members right now, we're getting calls from as far as Wakefield, north, north of Boston, people that want to come in and do shifts, people want to come in for EMS. The website, I think, had a lot to do with that, the town website, and the department has a good reputation, EMS has a good reputation, so people are willing to travel two hours to work two shifts in EMS, they're willing to travel, come out and do shifts for us in the Fire Department, if they can get their training done. So, you know, personnel-wise, we're, we've got a lot of new people that we're training, the Training Department's working extremely hard with them to do that. We're trying to get to the fifty marker, we want to hold a strong fifty, and it's gonna take us several years to get them trained, pretty well-trained and keep that mark. But that's, you fight fires with numbers, and it makes a huge difference already. We've gone to, we had a building fire this, this month in May in the report, and to turn around and see three or four fire ground-ready firefighters already pulling hose and grabbing tools, it freed up the experienced guys to get right into the building, and it was just huge, so. So we're doing all we can to keep recruiting and, and not blow the budget apart. Fire prevention, they, they've been active as always, that, that is what, I still say is one of the best things we ever did, that four-person unit is very, very active. I think some people know they were out with Red Cross just recently, this past weekend, they went into, it was a program Red Cross was doing for homes that were built in the early seventies and beyond, with battery-style smoke detectors, they went into thirty-four homes, we had the largest record in Worcester County of homes requested to go into, they changed ninety-three smoke detectors, and we did fifty-two CO detectors, they went into thirty-one homes, ninety-one smoke detectors, fifty-two, that's all in one day on a Saturday with Red Cross. So that's thirty, thirty-one homes that are a heck of a lot safer than they were before they went in, so that, that's a big number. Red Cross was extremely happy, you'll probably end up getting something in your office from Red Cross as a result of it. So, fire prevention's doing, doing their job, and they're doing a good job at it. And Training Department, Randy Dorian and Don Mailen, and the guys are, you know, relying on a lot of help from the senior guys, because we've got so many new people, but the Training Center's been really active, this time of year, everybody's coming in, using the facility, and we love it, and it's working out very well. We have our representative down there, when they come, we check their paperwork, and they do their thing, Sturba's just finished out in there, DeBrantre was just in there, so. But I think we have approximately twenty-five communities that use it on a steady basis year to year, right now, plus the US Army goes down and uses it. The Building Committee, and as far as the building's concerned, that, you know, the up, up to speed, obviously these commitment letters were, were huge, it was something Ann suggested we do to move forward to the Governor's Office and their representative that's gonna come out. Our next letter that we're working on is, is the draft, showing the need beyond the commitment letters from your office, and what we're looking to do. So, once that is together, we also got a commitment letter from the Finance Board, they wrote a nice letter, and so between the letter you, you folks signed and the Finance Board, that's exactly what Ann suggested we get, and we need, and, and was needed. So, that's kind of like phase one of going towards the money, and once our letter is done, we're gonna invite the Governor's Office out, they're actually gonna come out to the facility from what Ann thought, and walk his representative or her representative, his representative out here to look around and, and see what we're doing. So, having the land available is a big, big step, that, because we've tried for this money before, and on a couple of occasions, and it didn't go. So we really have to have our ducks in a row in order to hook that two million dollars that's sitting, sitting there waiting for us if we can get it, so we'll give it our best shot.
Put it that way.
As far as incidents are concerned, we had a building fire, somebody got burnt at that fire, not severely, but did get burnt, and it got into, it was actually started as a tractor fire and got into the building. That was a knockdown, that was a daytime fire. So that was a little stressful for a few minutes, but we managed to get a crew up there. Then we had medical assists, we've had three of them this past month, we had vehicle, this is for the month of May, we had a couple car accidents, and we had a house full of smoke from a boiler, then we had unauthorized burnings, we had a couple of them. We had a couple standby calls for some other communities to help out, we had a couple good intent calls to help people out in their homes, lockouts, things like that. Smoke detector activations, we had ten of them, carbon monoxide, we had a couple incidents with cot CO in the building, and then we had severe weather and standby. During the severe weather standby, we started staffing the station again for anything like a heavy thunderstorm coming through the area or anything like that, so we, I put a call out and we staffed for three, four hours, at the period of the, the storm besides EMS. And the first, the first storm we had this year, I did it over the winter for the blizzards, but I did it for a storm just recently, and sure as heck, we're standing there, five of us, and whack, house right across the street over here got hit, and I knew it, and I, so I got on the radio and said, we, we, we got a house, something just got hit. So the trucks responded immediately, and this house had burnt the breakers, tripped everything, lucky the building didn't really get going, but it's well worth it, the, the guys were there, were in thirty, thirty-five seconds, so we knew something, a little cannon that got whacked. So, that's all working out really good. We gotta get some equipment for the rescue, because we're gonna be, one of the intents one of the intents of doing these other trucks and tankers and things is that I'm hoping down the road that we can help the town with its ISO rating even more than it is. And, uh, with that four thousand gallons on, with the staffing of the station, back to doing the staffing of the station, getting foreign shows on the rescue with hydrant assist valves, uh, all these things are the things that they look at. The staff numbers going up to forty-five to fifty members. The insurance company asks us every single year about these things. So these, these things might somehow help us to even get a better rating, which is pretty hard to do, I would imagine.
Which saves us money on an insurance.
Saves everybody money in town. Yeah, absolutely. So that's kind of the goal, to make it a little safer for everybody, but also maybe there's a financial benefit in the end of it. So that's one of the things behind it. Um, just want to mention too, the flags that we did downtown, the fire department does those. Uh, Sue, Sue, I want to make sure I say her name right. Sue Lowendowski?
Lowendowski, yep.
Lowendowski, I'll tell you, uh, the town owes her, she, she worked extremely hard to come up with the money with fundraiser. Though all those flags are brand new and those are very expensive. So we still have like twenty of the old ones, but we put them up. But I also suggest that we buy a safety basket and through the highway department. Because I've been standing on top of this Howard truck doing it fifteen feet in the air. It's not a good thing to do. So we're going to get, uh, we actually ordered the safety basket through this fundraiser. They don't have quite the money yet, so I put up a thousand bucks to get it and I'll get it back from them. But that basket's coming and it's going to be stored at the highway. It's going to be the highways basket and it goes on the loader, uh, the backhoe. So it's designed for that particular backhoe and it'll be safe. So anybody could go in the basket safely and work on the flags or do whatever they need. So, uh, she, she really did a, worked very hard to get all that done.
Needs to be a forty footer.
Yeah, you know, so, but my hat's off to her. She, she worked hard and the flags looked good, I thought.
Yeah, they looked great.
Yeah, going up through town.
Memorial Day.
We tried to position them so they didn't get whacked with the, uh, you know, the tractor trailers and stuff that, that will get hooked on the little things on the poles, but we got most of them. Other than that, I think, um, we are, uh, we are now calling our dispatch center up at state police is now, uh, called New Braintree Fire Alarm. Every community that's dispatched out of there has been changed to call it. Not dispatch or twelve or anything like that. It's going to be New Braintree Fire Alarm. That's going to be district wide, all the way from Oxbridge up through here. So all the fire departments will be, will be called. So if you hear that on the scanner, then that's what you're hearing. That's us calling a fire alarm, fire alarm, excuse me, New Braintree Fire Alarm. And, uh, also we instituted as of the third of this month, alarm cards. So right now for the town of North Brookfield, a first alarm for us is all our equipment goes out to work on the fire. What we consider first alarm, talking structure fires now, not brush fires, uh, structure fires. Uh, first alarm to us might be a chimney fire with fire in the walls, might be an outbuilding, a shed, a garage, something of that nature. And our, our department would be the only ones toned out for that call, uh, unless we see it's going to grow. If we go to second alarm, um, you're not only going to get all North Brookfield's personnel and equipment, but you're going to get an engine from Westbrookfield, Brookfield and East Brookfield. You'll get a RIT team from Barry. You'll get a, uh, twenty-five hundred gallon engine coming out of New Braintree. And we have a, um, cover truck coming from Ocam, second alarm. So if anybody's homes, God forbid, catch fire, you're going to go, our, our people have been instructed to go immediately to second alarm. It sounds strong, but during the daytime, I can get three engines from three towns and maybe get four people. All right? So our goal is to make sure we're on the strong side and then if it pans out to be too strong on the alarm card, we'll back it down. But right now a second alarm would be those three engines, all our equipment, Ocam, Barry's RIT team coming in to protect us and New Braintree's, uh, New Braintree's twenty-five hundred gallons. If we go to third alarm, third alarm's going to keep all of that, what we just talked about, and it's also going to have a ladder truck coming from Spencer. And it's going to get me another RIT team from Warren, which allows me another engine company on scene because I can free up one RIT team. If we go to fourth alarm, we get a ladder out of Ware, we get a ladder out of Lester on top of everything else we just talked about, but we also get a RIT team from Paxton. So it builds up to fourth alarm. Fifth alarm is a strike team, strike team and, uh, task force. So we're pretty well covered and, uh, we have to request the tankers. There's five communities that are listed for tankers for us. So if, if one of our officers gets out to the fire for a second alarm and they think they need tankers, they don't have to name them off. They're just going to say, give me a second alarm with tankers and dispatch has the list of five tankers that will be called to start coming in. So it's either with or without tankers depending on where we are, what we're dealing with. So that's how the alarm cards are going to work. Um, you know, they're a work in progress. We'll probably tweak them as we go, but, uh, a lot of the other communities are following what we're doing. Similar to the tankers, yes or no, or whether they have water in their district or not. So, so it's a lot of good things happening and that's it.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah.
You said you were going to be brief, Joe.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we have a motion to accept that report?
So moved. Second?
Who's made a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, use of the rail bed is yours, John?
That's mine.
Yeah, that's one. What do you get?
Do we want to go through that or wing it? This is it?
Is it a different one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a letter from the Chickapee watershed.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So there's a letter from the Chickapee Rivers Watershed Council. Uh, C four R, I guess that's what they call themselves. Um, working on a series of paddling trails for the Quabog River region. One good area of access is on the East Brookfield River just below Lake Lashway, near the East Brookfield Town Offices. Point can be reached by a short walk along the abandoned railroad bed at the end of Connie Mac Street in East Brookfield. It's my understanding the North Brookfield has ownership of this. So could we discuss permission to use this as an access path? I realize that there is consideration on if the rail could be revived, but perhaps we could use the trail till that happens. Uh, and they look forward to speaking with us.
We just talked about not opening that side.
Yeah.
For walking, but they'd actually be parking behind the shoe shop.
Parking down there.
There is parking there, but what about the bridge? The bridge is not.
And they have to cross the bridge.
Safe to go across if, yeah. The bridge is not safe down there.
Yeah, so now that we'd want to.
If they want to repair the bridge, well.
Yeah.
Do you want me to ask them to come to a meeting?
They're saying that they'll walk right here. The bridge is further down.
So they're thinking of parking.
Parking at the field.
At the police station?
Yep.
Town offices?
Town offices. Walking along the field and then down into the, the road.
Yeah, but the bridge is over here, I believe.
Yep.
That's the, that's the building.
Okay.
I'm guessing.
So they're just looking for permission to clear that section to get down to the water.
But that's not us, I think.
They're saying that's the rail trail, the old rail trail.
Yeah.
Do you want me to ask them to come to a meeting?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Okay. Then they have to get permission from East Brookfield to park.
Yeah.
We don't have parking down there.
Nope.
They'll have to do that.
Um, but the rail line, um, I don't know if I talked to you, Brandon. I, I found the, the deeds for the original railroad properties. And all the deeds give the properties to the Ra- North Brookfield Railroad Company, eighteen seventy-five to eighteen seventy-eight, three pages worth of deeds.
Right, but the, uh, the town owned the stock and their company owned ninety percent of the stock.
Right, ninety percent of the stock, right. But they don't own the asset. They don't own the trail. The shareholders don't own the trail. The, the North Brookfield Railroad Company actually owns the trail. So.
But who owns the company, the stock or the trade?
Um, not exactly. They own shares of a company, so. And the board of directors control what happens with any company, so, um, yeah. I just wanted, I'll get you the individual deeds because I'm going to trace them all up to who owns it currently so that we have a, um, the chain of deeds. Um, what else was there? Did you want to talk about the rail bed while we're on it or?
If you want. Do you want, don't want me to go through what I have?
Yeah.
The whole thing or parts of it or what do you want to do?
Um.
Do you agree with what I have on there?
Yeah, I agree with it. Uh, you read it? Did you read it?
Which one's that?
John's. Uh, originally we were going to form a committee to clear the rail trail. Um, we're thinking at this point that it might be better for us to oversee the clearing of the rail trail as the board of directors of the railroad. So organize groups to do the clearing, clear it from, uh, you can't hide Sue. You, you opened the can of worms there.
I know.
Um, and John, John's the one that's kind of spearheading the group to get things cleared up. So our, our original intent is to start up here at the station depot and start clearing as we go down towards East Brookfield in sections. And I guess you have a group of people ready to go, right? So.
Just need to say the word, that's all.
So, yeah, to, to avoid friction with the abutters that haven't been notified yet and to keep people from going off of the twenty foot right away that, we own sixty feet. Railroad line is sixty feet wide. We're thinking we're going to do twenty foot right down the middle of a path, leaving twenty foot buffer on each side from the abutters. So to oversee that, um, John prepared a lot of.
If you want, I'll go through this and, and, uh, it's just kind of generic. Uh, from the, from the North Brookfield Railroad Incorporated. At this time, for the safety of the residents of North Brookfield, we, the board, will not be appointing a rail trail committee. We feel that as we move forward with opening up the rail trail for non-motorized hiking, biking and walking, we as the railroad commission, commissioners should be responsible for any and all actions regarding notifications to abutters and trail cleaning and repair work. We're in the process of creating a policy to govern the rail trail committee and what their responsibilities will be. We're now looking for volunteers to help with the cleaning, the clearing of brush and cleanup of debris. The board members will be scheduling clearing times. At no time should anyone take it upon themselves to work on the trail without having a board member present. We need to be respectful of the abutters and hope they are respect, and hope they have respect for us also. This trail, we hope, will give the town of North Brookfield and neighboring towns a great space to enjoy while walking, hiking, biking with their friends and families. A letter to the abutters has been approved by the board and will be going out through the mail soon. Please be patient with us as we go through the notification process. As soon as we can, we will start with some clearing work, starting on the North Brookfield side. We look forward to seeing you, seeing how well our town can work together as we move forward. Your help will be greatly appreciated. Thank you. So we're looking for volunteers to help start clearing the path.
Yeah, I think we talked about Saturday mornings from like nine to one.
Nine to one.
Start doing that. Um, and then from one to five, we'll be scraping and painting the townhouse, so.
Yep. So if anybody's interested in helping me this Saturday, I'm going to be starting at nine o'clock. I'll go until I can't anymore or one o'clock.
What are you clearing with?
Yeah, John, that's.
Brush cutters and, uh, possibly a small chainsaw. I don't know just yet what debris we're going to get. We're going to start up on this end behind the orchard where the, uh, solar panel field is. I'm going to come this way first. I know there's a washout there. We've got to find out what's in there and then we're going to go, once we clear from there, up towards Ward Street. We'll go beyond Ward and up to this section. Uh, I don't know how fast we can do it, but I want to start on Saturday morning. And, uh, I've got two brush cutters and we're going to need somebody to clear brush. Uh, you've got to be careful of ticks. Wear rugged clothing, long sleeve shirts because it's picker bushes and clearing brush. Uh, I've got two, two brush cutters. I'm going to man one, so if somebody else wants to, to use the other one, you all come to it. Or if you have a string cutter or something, uh, bring it along.
All right, anybody? Good?
Danger.
Yeah, um, are you going to have some heavy equipment available? Because a lot of the culprits are all blocked up. That all needs to be cleared and graded.
We need to see what.
He knows how to shoot a grape.
We need to see what we have first, so what, our, our goal right now is to clear the brush.
So get a preliminary idea of what's going on.
We need to see what.
Bring in the equipment you need to do the job correctly.
Yep, we need to see what we have first. And I've talked with Jason from the highway. He's willing to help us out. Uh, we do have people with tractors and dirt movers available. Uh, we've gotten some free dirt fill. Uh, someone's willing to donate to us, possibly the top coat or whatever. We don't know just yet until we see what the trail looks like. So that's the plan. We're not going to go to East Brookfield right away. We're going to stay away from that end and work on, we have some issues down there, so. That's going to be the plan. If anybody's interested, call my house. I'll text or email, so I'll work with you. I'm in the book.
All right.
Between nine and one, we're going to be down there, so.
Yep, just listen for the sound of the.
Lots of books.
If you hear the saw going, yep. I, I just suggest wearing, you know, something rugged. Don't, don't go down there in shorts and sneakers because it's, it's kind of rough in there, so.
All right, moving on. Next order of business is the resignation, uh, letter from the town accountant. Uh, we've known this has been coming for quite some time. We just didn't know when. Uh, she's given us kind of a soft notice, but, um, her last day will be September twenty-first, twenty eighteen. Uh, and she's been here how long? Quite some time.
Oh, probably forty years.
Forty years.
Oh, yeah, forever.
Uh, so we're going to have to find somebody to replace her. She's going to be sorely missed and hard to replace, but, um, she's given us many years of service, so. Um, we're going to move in on that replacement too, right?
Yeah, yeah, after July, we'll probably start advertising.
All right. Complete Streets Program. Just Jason, listen to her.
All right.
Hey there. Oh, hey, how's it going?
Very good. Yourself? Uh, my name's Ray Higuit, I'm an associate principal for Allison Hudson. I reached out to Jason just recently about the Complete Streets Program. Allison Hudson is a, uh, full-service engineering and planning firm. About, uh, have about seventy-five, uh, professionals working throughout the state. Um, I brought along with me Lou Ribito. He's the manager of Complete Streets in my firm. Um, he's well-known throughout the state. He actually wrote the guidelines for the state on Complete Streets. Um, I thought this would be a great program for North Brookfield, um, since, you know, you guys are kind of in my heart a little bit since I, you know, grew up here. Um, so I want Lou to, uh, explain the program, the different tiers and how it can be beneficial for the town.
Thanks, Ray. I'm just going to give you some handouts here. Walk through those. I'll leave this here as well. This is a copy of the sample Complete Streets prioritization plan. I'll explain that, um, with that involved. So the Mass UT Complete Streets Funding Program was created, um, and released in February two thousand and sixteen. Uh, this program was created by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation with the goal of providing incentives to municipalities to adopt and encourage complete streets in, uh, in all they do, whether it's, uh, roadway reconstruction, maintenance, rehabilitation. Uh, the goal is to provide safe and accessible options for all users, whether you're a walker or someone that's walking, biking, taking transit, um, even driving a vehicle. And the idea is that, um, it's really for people of all ages and ability. That's, that's what Complete Streets is all about. Uh, the Mass. The MassDOT Complete Street Funding Program, to date, has fi, it's being funded through the CIP, so there's a total of fifty million dollars available over the next five years. It started in two thousand seventeen, it'll end in two thousand twenty-one, with about ten million dollars a year to be spent throughout the Commonwealth. To date, there's been a total of seventy-one projects funded by DOT, and that's actually in the back of the card, you can see some of the, some of the coloring on the back of the sheet, some of the involvement. So the map on the ta, the top illustrates where, where municipality, municipalities are throughout the Commonwealth in the program. The program's a three-tiered program. Tier one is that you miss, your municipality, in order to really commit to complete streets, needs to pass a complete streets policy. And this is really just a commitment that a municipality will do what it can to implement complete streets. The other part of that is that the municipality must have taken training from DOT. DOT calls a one-on-one or two-on-one course, it's another three-hour, six-hour course in complete streets. And this is really just to get, just to give some education on some of the ideas of complete streets, what are some of the elements that benefit complete streets. After you've passed your policy, then you're then eligible to enter into tier two, which is development of prioritization plan. So one of the things I wanna make very clear, at no point does DOT expect a municipality to provide any funding into this, DOT is providing all the funding. So when you get into tier two, DOT will provide funds, they will, through a grant program, for the municipality to develop a complete streets prioritization plan. For a town such as North Brookfield, they will grant the town up to thirty-eight thousand dollars to develop that plan. In essence, that report there is kind of the end result of that plan, I can get into some specifics about that. Once the prioritization plan has been completed, the town is then eligible to go into tier three. Tier three is where you take a project from your prioritization plan, you've created, and you've created a list of projects, and you pick the one you wanna submit for funding. It is a competitive program, so you'll be competing with other municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. The state average is about fifty percent, so about, I think last round, forty-two municipalities submitted for funding, twenty-two were selected. One of the things with our company is that we have a higher success rate, we're somewhere just under seventy percent or so. So we, we have a good understanding of, you know, what projects you wanna group together, whether it's a single project hitting many complete streets elements, or whether it's multiple projects that meet, that expand over several complete streets elements. What do some of these projects look like? It seems like the rail trail's been a very hot topic tonight. That's a perfect project, an eligible project that you could get up to, and DOT will provide up to four hundred thousand dollars towards the construction of a project compared to choose a rail trail. This is a yearly amount, so you can actually apply, as long as you spend the funds within that year, you can apply again year two for another four hundred thousand. One of the other things that, I can say just from my experience, both having worked at DOT and having been involved with the program, is that there, I've yet to see two municipalities kind of work together to submit projects, and it seems like you already have a kind of a relationship in place with East Brookfield with the extension of the rail trail. So it might be a good time to kinda put your resources together, work on the prioritization plans together, and apply for four hundred thousand from each side, so you could have a, very close to a million dollars to put towards the reconstruction of the rail trail. Some other, um, some other specifics, um, there's, as I mentioned earlier, we, I think we've worked on, we're currently working on fifteen, we've worked, uh, completed about thirteen complete streets prioritization plans, we're currently working on three more. We're working with Lester on their prioritization plan. We've gone to Lancaster, it's about west is, uh, West Springfield, Agawam, as far as we've even been on Tisbury and Martha's Vineyard, so. One of, one of the things that we, I think we pride ourselves on is to kind of understand that each town's different, the needs are different. So when we look at the report, when we start doing some of the data analysis that becomes part of that report, we really dig into some of the, the elements of the things that make, you know, each town different, distinguish one from another. For example, in this town, maybe sidewalks are what's most important, aside from the rail trail. So one of the things we do is we look at pedestrian and bicycle level of comfort, so looking at things like pedestrian level of comfort, for example, we look at the infrastructure, other segments of sidewalk that are missing, this is an opportunity to provide a gap. For example, it might be a nice place out front here, where we parked, maybe to extend the sidewalks, so people aren't walking in the parking, in the parking stalls. Just outside here, to the building to the left, the sidewalk ends, doesn't hit the driveway, might be an opportunity to extend the drive. These are the types of projects that, that would come up from the development of the prioritization plan. One of the other big pieces of the developing the prioritization plan is, is a very involved or, or inclusive public involvement process. So, one of the things we do and required to do under the program is to hold a public information meeting. This public information meeting, we, we meet with folks like, like yourselves and present on the program, present where we are, show you some of the maps that we've started to develop, and then really, great tables to break out maps and start really getting some feedback from you, where do you think the issues are? Tell me where you think there might be some speeding, are there some sidewalk gaps, are there places where maybe there's some clearing issues, some shrubs are growing into the roadway blocking some sightlines? And those are the things that help us build a project list. Then when we take, create that project list, and we go through a refinement process, we could be with the board selectmen, other town officials, public works, fire, EMS, and really get that project list down to the, the list that you'll see in that report, make sure, pass it around after someone gets to see it. DOT has a requirement that they want a minimum, they're making an investment of thirty-eight thousand dollars in the town of North Brookfield, so they wanna see a nice project list, they require a minimum of fifteen projects over a period of five years. Generally, when we go through this process, we sit down, we meet with some of the town folks, we get lists of projects anywhere from thirty to, I think, Agawam was a hundred and sixty-nine projects, so, I don't know, where they came up with that number, but, that's how high the project list got, so, um, I think that's...
What's the first step, though? For the letter of intent, right?
Yeah, so...
Can you explain that, too?
Yeah, thanks, Ray. So right now, I know the town does not have a complete streets policy, so I think there are two options, one is that, and one of the things that, one services that we do offer is that we would assist the town with the draft of complete streets policy. This policy would need to be passed by the highest elected board or official, and then submitted to DOT for scoring. The policy, once submitted to MassDOT, has to score eighty or above. Is North Brookfield a member of the community compact cabinet? I think every, all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns are. So if you are a member of the compact cabinet, you can additional four points added to your policy score, if you happen to have selected complete streets as best practice, you get another four points. So you're trying to reach that eighty. One of the things we have experience with, and, and a lot of communication, Spencer, Steve Tyler and Spencer, is trying to build a policy that really fits the community, both from a need perspective, and really what you're able to keep up with and do and commit, commit to. It's not about scoring a hundred, once you score that eighty, if you have an eighty and that, and the town next door has an eighty-two, they don't get any additional benefit, so really wanna help you build a policy that you can stand behind and doesn't, doesn't put additional stress or expenses on other departments within, within town. So anything?
No, no, you're doing a great job.
So, um, I, at this point, if you have any questions, you're more than happy to, to answer them.
What's the, um, what's the timeframe from, say, we were to pursue this? What's the timeframe generally, from startup, where we do our policy and get our training, to the point where we have a prioritization plan ready to go?
That's, that's a great question. So under tier one, which is the policy, there's a couple options. One is that MassDOT recognizes that not all municipalities can be ready to get right into the program, because they need to develop a policy, it has to be vetted, and so on and so forth. So one of the other options they offer is what's called the letter of intent. So they basically download a letter from the MassDOT, there's a, masscompletestreets.com is the website. Under resources, there are forms there, and there's one that's called letter of intent. And the letter essentially states that we, um, the board of the selectmen, town of North Brookfield decide, we'll pass a policy within one year's time. That letter gets submitted to DOT, and then you can get right into tier two, which is development of your prioritization plan. That takes a little bit of time, but they're gonna walk you through that process. If you were to select Howardstein Hudson to do your, your prioritization plan, you would submit a scope and fee, that would then get sent to MassDOT saying that we're engaging the services of Howardstein Hudson. It takes about forty-eight weeks to get a contract started. After the forty-eight weeks are, have gone through, you'll get a contract back from DOT, and then we can initiate a second contract. So the way it works is that you would hire us, and then DOT would reimburse you. So, uh, one, once the prioritization plan begins, usually it's about three, three months or so till we complete the prioritization plan. Two very important dates to keep in mind is there are two period, two times during the year where MassDOT offers funding for tier three, which is your project funding up to that four hundred thousand, and they are in May one and October one. So, for example, if, um, within the next couple of weeks, you're, say, okay, we're gonna submit a letter of intent, we wanna hire Howardstein Hudson, here, MassDOT, here are the documents that you need. Eight weeks from now would have us in August, say, sometime in August, so we'd need September, October, and November, so for that next round, which would be April, your prioritization plan would be completed, so April of nineteen, and May of nineteen, you would be submitting for construction funding. So I don't know how that ties into whether the trail, the construction of the trail, I don't know what the timelines are for that, but, um, that might be certainly a project that, depending on the timing, um...
Probably looking more for sidewalks than the rail trail.
Yeah, sidewalks as well.
Yeah.
One of the other things, too, is that as you develop the prioritization plan, DOT recognizes from year to year, your priorities might change. So you list your projects and priority from one to forty, let's say you have forty projects. When you're ready to apply for project funding, it might be project five, that's the one that you wanna apply for in year one, because you happen to be doing resurfacing on a certain road, and you wanna put in sidewalk. So you'd be able to apply for the sidewalk under the funding program, and then do the resurfacing under your chapter ninety, what are the funding resources you have as a town.
Cause we get the, the townhouse project, the, um, friends are gonna...
Yep.
...talk to us in a minute about what's going on up there, but, one of the things is downtown revitalization in connection with the townhouse itself, so I'm wondering, can these funds be added to other funding sources, say, to...
They can be added to any funding source other than a tip-funded project, so as long as MassDOT is not, not providing funds for a project, any other funding source, this can be combined.
Does that, that include, um, chapter ninety monies?
Yes, yeah, so chapter ninety is, so you can use chap, a combination of chapter ninety and funding from this program if you, your project gets started. One of the things we didn't talk about is what type of projects, um, there's sidewalks, there's bike lanes, curb ramps, there's rubber, tangle, flash, eglons, curb extensions, all sorts of projects, benches, crosswalks, bike racks, so it's really, um, a very robust list of eligible projects, um, for funding.
And what's the amount of money that we have to come up with first to be reimbursed, later?
That would be the thirty-eight thousand.
The, the whole thirty-eight thousand?
Yeah, and the way that works is through a reimbursement, so that, um, the, essentially what would happen is you, you would get invoiced every month, and then you would resuminate the invoice monthly, so it's not, you know, you don't need to put up the thirty in front, it happens, it's invoicing command, you pay them out, and send it back to DOT, and then DOT wants to see the receipt, they're, they get the check, and then they'll...
That's a guaranteed reimbursement, it's not like we're taking it risk?
No, it's guaranteed. One, DOT will, MassDOT will issue a letter with a dollar amount in a contract.
Okay.
And that, that's one important thing to keep in mind, too, is that, um, you have to have a contract with DOT before you were to engage in a contract, but that's what DOT will not reimburse you, so.
One of the things we did out, uh, Ware, we were just in Ware, um, like a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago, is Lou actually went out there and helped them with their letter of intent. And then he also provided service over the phone and through some computer technology, whatever they were doing, so that they were setting it up correctly. And, and that's what's important for you guys. I don't know if it would be you guys that would be doing this, or a highway superintendent would be doing this. You don't have a town planning, correct? You have a planning board, but not a town chairman, right? So it'd be either you or the highway superintendent, that would be so. And Lou can certainly walk you through the steps, um, over the phone, can even FaceTime or whatever, it doesn't matter, um, and help you get there, so you're eligible for the four hundred thousand dollars that can go for the rail trail. You gotta go for downtown revitalization, your crosswalks for the children, and you have a lot of cyclists in the summertime, throwing up one forty-eight and sixty-seven. Maybe a bike lane. You know, think big, I don't, uh, you know, just, bunch of throwing that out there.
Uh, one of the other things, just, uh, worth mentioning, so the, the way the program is managed by MassDOT is through that portal, so the, the masscompletestreets.com, um, you would register there if you haven't already registered, um, when you log in, there'll be a, kind of user page on the top left, you just click on there, um, it'll say username and password, if you don't have username and password, it'll say register, you click on that, it'll pull that menu, select your town, it'll ask you for some information, fill that out to the best of your ability, and then it'll enter you into the, right into the portal. When you, whether you have a policy or a letter of intent, that will get uploaded to the portal. So the way that communication happens between the town and DOT is all, is mostly through the portal, with the exception of the initial outreach to say, we wanna get into the program, here's who we're working with, and then everything else happens, essentially.
And we have your contact information, if we might help, or?
Yeah, I do have cards, so.
Awesome, thank you.
I actually forgot mine, but, um, Jason, there's my phone number, so, you can assist that way.
Good. Good, you're in charge then.
Okay. Do you have any questions with the program, or?
No, I think you've pretty thoroughly explained it, so, um, yeah, it looks like a, sounds like a good opportunity, I would think.
Yeah, it really is, I think municipalities are, they're starting to catch on, you know, when you look at what some municipalities get for chapter ninety, for example, a town like, you know, North Brookfield, maybe around three hundred thousand, and this is an opportunity to more than double that. But, one of the things that is not included in the programs, they will pay for construction, they will not pay for design, so when picking a project, at least for year one, maybe we're gonna try to pick projects that are low-designed, like crosswalks, sidewalks, things that don't, generally don't need much design. If you're looking at larger-scale projects, some, what some municipalities are doing is they're leveraging some of their chapter nineties, so if you look at the cost of design versus construction, almost one percent, let's say, so they're leveraging twenty percent of the chapter ninety to get the four hundred thousand, so.
Yeah, so that's why I think we need to involve the highway superintendent...
Yeah.
...pretty, pretty closely, so.
Yeah, it might be worth a phone call, a conference call, not with me, Lou, he's the expert, not me. And, uh, you know, initiate, you know, to get it going, right? I think it'd be great for, I mean, the rail trail.
Yeah.
It's a slam dunk.
Yeah, we're gonna need funding, without a doubt, cause the railroad has no money.
I did help, um, when I lived in the town of Rockland, which is south of Boston, uh, I also did a rail trail, uh, initiated that in the town, and, um, it was actually a land swap with the MBTA, and it was actually interesting, but, one of the things we looked at was looking at, um, private companies to donate, not just donate equipment, but they also donated, um, people, because they have volunteer programs, like Blue Cross Blue Shield, they have a huge team, and they'll send out hundreds of people, something you wanna think about, Waybug, Reber, I don't know what they do, uh, but there's something there, Home Depot, um, even though it's not in North Brookfield, you guys go to Home Depot, you guys go to Walmart, they have these volunteer teams, they can assist you, so you'll have your volunteers from your town, which is great, and it sounds like you're ready to enroll right now, uh, but give them a call, and they'll come out on a Saturday with equipment, and they'll help, um, and they'll, they'll get it done, and it's great advertising for them, too, it's great marketing for the town.
Great.
Well, you said you did the rail trail down there, can you run the brush cutter?
So, we used...
Come on down.
Yeah, we ended up using all the, all the wood that we cut down, put it right back into the rail.
Sure.
And, uh, people were afraid of it in the beginning, because they said, oh, you know, kids are gonna hang out down there, they're gonna smoke weed, or whatever, um, that's not what happened. What happened was families were using it, and they were going from the town of Abington all the way to the town of Hanover, and as they were going, they were stopping in Rockland Center, getting an ice cream, getting a haircut, doing that kinda stuff. It brought people downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Walking, and that's where, you know, wouldn't that be great?
Kind of the plan that we're looking at, between us and East Brookfield.
Yeah, I think, you know, what Lou was saying, these two towns, uh, teaming up, you have even a bigger shot, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Great, okay, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have to approve her resignation letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we can make somebody stay, so, um, do you want to?
No, no, I'm just, Nancy Nichols.
Yep.
Do you have to approve her?
Do you need anything?
No, she gave her notice.
Okay, that's it.
Four years ago.
No, I didn't know, for sure, I just wanted to get it skipped.
Okay, um, next on the list here is a, is it a one day liquor license?
Yes.
One day liquor license for the North Brookfield Democratic Town Committee. Uh, Ethan, are you? Um, I see you have an insurance policy, all the forms are filled out, I hear that you've spoken to the, uh, police chief. So everything seems in order, I entertain motion to approve the one day liquor license.
So, second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion, anything to say on your behalf?
Well, it's a great event. It's a, uh, it's a barbecue, a scholarship barbecue. It'll be the first annual Lucy Stone Scholarship for a senior at North Brookfield High School in two thousand nineteen. Um, and that's what the purpose of it is, is to be one of the four scholarships. And, uh, there'll be a lot of Democratic candidates there as well, in the crowd, as well as some elected officials. So, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a good event for, uh, for some high school senior in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and the, the date of the event is on the thirtieth?
Yeah, June thirtieth from noon to three o'clock.
I have eleven to five, is that changed?
Eleven to, oh, you know what, we're just covering the timeframe, just leave it at that.
So the posted, the posted time for people to actually show up?
Right.
Noon to three, okay, and that is going to be at nine Ashley Row? Okay. So motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's all set.
There's two forms to sign if you would. His, no, his original, his own.
Do you need all three of us on here or just?
The second one does.
You don't need a copy of that, do you, is that just the town keeps it?
No, you should get it, you should, should have a copy, I can mail it to you if you want.
Okay, uh, and the next, um, open issue we have is, um, there's an open position on the Board of Health. Uh, we have a resignation letter from the Board of Health, which is an elected board. Uh, Phoebe Pia Marini, uh, has tendered her resignation effective June first. So we have to fill that spot. And Trevor's here, you, you recommended?
Yeah, um, Trevor Russo of Board Health, um, we've worked with Bob Wiltletelli for the past six months anyway, so on budgeting and piecing out like how the, how the recycling center monies work and everything else. And, um, he has offered to fill in in the spot, um, pick the other letter in front of the lights.
Yep.
Until, like, so does that go to the next election?
It goes to the next election, so may.
So he's, he's, he's volunteered to do that.
Serve until may, and I noticed he was here, he had to leave evidently.
Yeah, he has a con, con.
Yeah, um, uh, and, oh, Bob's well known to me, serving on Finance Committee, so, um, I know he's, I know he's qualified.
A big guy.
I agree, sure.
All right, um, with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Bob Wiltletelli to fill the, um, vacated seat on the Board of Health until the May election.
So, second?
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Jim, what was yours?
Uh, Jim Buzzell, live on the recently paved Tucker Cross Road here in town, very appreciative to the town and the Highway Department for, um, making that happen. Uh, and I'm also here to represent the Friends of the North Brookfield Townhouse. Give some information and an update about what we've been doing and, and sort of what our plans are moving forward. Uh, we're a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to the preservation and restoration of the North Brookfield Townhouse, while retaining the important historical character and architectural design of the building in order to reestablish it as a center of civic, political, social, and cultural activity in North Brookfield. We have a dedicated member who's been updating our website, and, uh, you can find lots of information there about, uh, you know, what we're doing, uh, maybe how to join our membership or make a donation. The, um, website is friendsnorthbrookflietownhouse.org. Uh, so this past year, um, we've been busy with projects, and, and like I say, I'll talk about the plans in a minute. But, um, uh, we have a, uh, calendar that we developed through the North Brookfield Public Schools, uh, which was sold at the end of last year for, uh, calendar year twenty eighteen. And, uh, artists, uh, from the school from grades K through twelve are represented on that calendar. Um, last week, we had a, um, hosted a field trip at the, um, uh, grade hall in the townhouse for the third grade from the school, to give them some education with both of these projects. Uh, our intent is to get the younger generation to be more aware of, uh, that the building's there, what it's been used for historically, and for them to see and talk about what it can be used for again. Uh, we had, on Memorial Day, we had a chicken barbecue, was hosted in conjunction with a congregational church. Again, purpose raising funds and also educate the public as to, um, uh, the importance of, uh, rehabbing this building and, and getting it, uh, to function again. We're currently working with the Board of Selectmen on developing plans to have the townhouse painted, and I saw that was on the agenda to discuss a little bit more later. Um, uh, we're hoping that that can happen before the year is out, I have a donation to present to the board, but I'll wait until that comes up, uh, in a bit in the agenda. Full restoration of the townhouse to allow pu- the public use with handicap accessibility is a project will, which will require considerable capital to achieve. Uh, through past efforts, the Friends have secured one point nine million dollars in state and federal tax credits to use towards this end. Uh, this is a considerable sum, but it does leave us with a gap of at least one point five million and perhaps a bit more to complete construction. With the goal of raising these funds through means other than asking the North Brookfield townspeople for tax dollars, we plan to have a capital campaign to include funding from grants and foundation gifts, as well as corporate and private donations. Uh, it is the opinion of consultants we've been using, who are experts in historic preservation, with much experience in helping small towns such as ours with renovation projects such as our townhouse, that it is best to, to best align ourselves to pursue this funding, the town incorporate a downtown development project in conjunction with our plan for the townhouse. To this end, we have begun to investigate this possibility and have found that state funding is available for this type of planning effort. Preliminary meeting is in the works to bring together town representatives, regional planning agents, friends of the townhouse, and our consulting firm for this purpose. Uh, we appreciate, uh, public support we've received in the past and invite, uh, anyone who is interested to join our organization or help us in any way, um, to contact us.
Thanks, and, um, the, um, the people that we talked to spoke about combining a downtown revitalization plan. We had to get a plan to revitalize the downtown in order to try to bring in some money, so is that the meeting that you're?
That's the meeting that I'm talking about, right, so incorporating the board here, uh, representing executives from the planning board in town, along with Central Mass Planning, uh, there's a Quay Bog Development, Community Development Group that, uh, we would like to invite as well, uh, as well as the Friends to sit down and, uh, sort of, uh, look into ways that we can not just, um, get the townhouse done, but revitalize the downh- downtown to make it more attractive to, uh, inviting businesses and.
Well, thanks for the update. And to go along with that, um, we are seeking to scrape and paint the townhouse. So we're, uh, seeking donations from residents, businesses in the area, uh, to further that effort. A lot of that is gonna be by volunteer effort, the Sheriff's Department has already been contacted. Uh, we're in their queue of, um, to get the, the, their services to help us paint it. Uh, but, we need, um, along with that, we need to supply the paint, we need to supply the paint brushes, the scrapers, um.
Coffee.
Coffee, and donuts in the morning, and we need to give them a lunch at noon. Uh, so there are some costs involved, um, and there are some volunteer efforts underway, John's, is he son-in-law?
My son-in-law's gonna do a little bit of cap and free work. In the front, there's a few pieces of wood missing, he's agreed to do that.
So if you see people buzzing around the townhouse, um, they're, they're doing it with our, uh, permission to get it ready for scraping and painting, and, um, you may see, um, a group of us at some point up there working on it also. Uh, so if you wanna volunteer your time for that and some money for that, we would be accepting of donations, and you?
I do, I do have a donation, I just wanted to mention also, um, uh, there's been some talk about, uh, what color to paint the townhouse. We've looked into, uh, any information we could try to find to see what the original color was. No one really knows what the original color of the townhouse was. And so I've done some work to, um, make contact with companies that analyze, uh, through some sort of spectral microscopic techniques, uh, samples of buildings to, and they, and by analyzing the layers, uh, they can find out and tell us what the original color is. So while John's cutting brush on the rail trail, Brandon and I are gonna be out, uh, Friday morning, taking a couple of samples from the building to send off to these people, and the Friends have, uh, set aside funds to pay for this analysis, so we can see what the original color was.
Excellent.
Once we find it out, we can decide if that's the color we wanna use or not, but at least we'll know the original color.
Well, I think we were talking, um, and it may make sense to scrape and just paint it, get it white, paint it now.
Sure.
And then, in the end, when all the projects are done, because there's gonna be significant work done to it, that, uh, before it's ready in its final stage, we go back to its original.
Agree, agree, so I have a donation, a check to present to the board, this is from John and Mindy Tripp, for five hundred dollars towards this project.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, and thank you again for your generosity.
You're welcome.
That's gonna go, we have a townhouse painting supplies, do we have a?
I have a town, I have a townhouse, um, account, yep.
Okay, so we do have an account set up, so, um, you can make donations through the board for the purposes, and you can, um, state, i- if you're giving a donation, state on there that it's for, uh, the townhouse painting project. Uh, if you wanna give a donation to the rail trail for, um, that effort, just make sure you put on the check or a letter that you send us where you'd like it to go, and it'll get there. Uh, also, street lighting, there's another fund we set up for that, uh, some weeks ago. If you have a street light that you want on, that's outside of your house, uh, that is not on currently, uh, you can give money to the town specifically for that street light, and we'll make sure that light gets on, so.
Because every light that the town's putting on is on.
Yes.
They're, they're done.
There's still a few out.
Nope, they're done, Mass Light is done.
A couple that are still out.
Are we paying for them, we gotta look at the bill, so.
I don't think so.
I pay for my own street light.
Yeah.
From, from when, a long time ago?
From when all the lights were taken down and then moved on back up.
In, in the seventies or eighties, right? Were you just talking just now?
Eighties, when, when, whenever they took down all the.
Before.
I'm talking about, not recently.
Right, yeah, they, they changed the law, so now you can't do that anymore. Department of Public Utilities came in and said that you, as an individual homeowner, cannot sponsor a light, so it has to be done through the town, so we're taking in money from, we're doing that, just an interim.
Are you gonna start paying my bill?
Huh?
Are you gonna start paying my bill?
No, well, you can continue to pay it, or you can donate to the town and we'll then pay your bill.
Well, the ones that are, are under contract with National Grid can remain, right?
Yeah, the ones that are.
You just can't, no, but I pay for my own street light also.
Mm-hmm.
So that's gonna stay the same, they're not taking it away from me.
No.
So if you're, if you've been paying for your street light, continue to pay through National Grid.
Right.
Directly, if you want that light on.
Yes.
I have a question about the townhouse.
Okay.
It's gonna use lead paint, so when you're scraping that paint, do you make a determination whether there's lead paint under there?
Yes, we looked into that, somebody else raised that issue, and, um, the townhouse has been scraped and repainted a number of times in recent past, so, um, the professional painters who have done it have mitigated that. So those, there's no more, the stuff that's peeling is not lead paint.
Well, they're gonna have to prime it first and paint it?
We're gonna scrape it, prime it, paint it, yep.
Okay.
That's the plan. Uh, so anything else to be said on the townhouse issue?
Yeah, this, uh, as far as fundraising, remember back to one of the fundraising funds for Police Crusoes or anything like that, had a thing at the, uh, bank, and it worked out, because they also kicked in like three thousand dollars, so you might wanna see if they'll.
We're gonna be asking local businesses for donations, or they can do it on their own.
They had a donation jar set up at the bank and it will display.
Yep.
Uh, and then, kind of like, towards the end of that, they kicked in some money, not even, I don't know if anybody specifically asked.
Yep.
But just to get them involved.
Maybe the Friends, maybe the Friends can do something.
Donation, but get your foot in the park.
Yeah, we'll, we'll approach them on that, you can take care of that, just ask them about it, let us know. Anything else on the townhouse?
You definitely didn't get the, the letter together for the, um, for the project, to Worcester County, so that's all.
To the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah.
Yes, I confirmed with them that they have it.
Right.
So we're, we're, that's why I said we're in the queue, we're, we're.
We're on the list.
We're on their list and we're on their radar and they're gonna fit us in when, whenever they get around to us, so.
That doesn't mean we have to wait for them, if we can do it beforehand.
Yeah, at least some of the prep work, getting it scraped and ready to paint, so. Um, and it was, the other issue was scaffolding and trying to get up onto the higher portions of it, and I think we have something in the works on that.
Hopefully, I'll call him tomorrow.
Will it pay insurance on that?
You're gonna be self-indemnified.
Oh, fine.
Okay, uh, public comment period, anybody here needs to be heard on anything?
Yeah, I just, uh, you remember a couple of weeks ago, Jason wasn't here when I brought the issue of the dumping off of Grant's Hall Street, did you have a chance to look into that or? Yeah, since we're all talking about litter and stuff.
Jason was just here, you should've brought it up when Jason was here, cause it's.
The dumping of what, I'm sorry, I missed it.
The dumping on, off of Grant's Hall Street, that, off that path going up to school.
Highway uses it for their.
The highway uses it for their stuff.
I brought that up a couple, a couple of weeks.
I did, I mentioned it to him, but after you brought it up, I mentioned it to him. Um, and I haven't gotten a resolution on it yet, so I'll, I'll double check on that. Yep, no, yeah, we should've said something earlier, cause we could've had it right here and asked him again.
Another question, um, are you gonna do anything with the forest park there, they started that, on, on North Brookfield Road?
The, the.
Where they, where they stopped the pond for the fish?
Oh, yeah, the, the for, we have a committee that, that's actively working on that. Um, they asked for a hundred dollars more in their budget this year, so if you're at the meeting on June twenty-second, you can support that huge increase. Um, it's a thousand dollars, that's what they get for the year, with the, with the hundred dollar increase, it'll bring up to an even thousand dollars, but that's all they need to run that. Um, as far as doing what, I, I think you were looking into a.
Yeah, well, they keep it maintained, they got picnic tables and all that stuff down there, there's parking, uh, they mow it, and, and they're working on a nine-hole disc golf course on the, um, on the smaller section where the pond is, so.
And right, horses, upon the other, coming on the other side.
Yeah, I don't think it's restricted, it's not restricted that way, is it?
There's ledgie stuff up in there, if you walk up and through there with the power, and go into the power lines, it's rocky, I don't know.
There is a sign out there, um, I've driven by it and I've seen it, but I haven't stopped to look to see what it says. Does, is it one of those no uses, you know how they have like a picture with a?
Yeah, yeah.
There might, there might be restrictions based on that. Anything else? You just here for a Tuesday night, something to do?
Just get information.
All right, you're enough.
Like know what's going on and that.
Did you gain any information?
I got plenty.
So you didn't burn your three questions tonight, so.
I know. I was sitting here trying to think of how I could keep you here for another half hour, but I don't have anything.
Well, they're not cumulative, so next week you don't get six.
Okay, we'll save up then.
Good. So a couple of announcements real quick. Dog license, you wanna?
Let me read it again. 2018 dog licenses are now available at the Townsburgs office. Tuesday and Thursday, 12 noon, 12 noon to 3:00 p.m., Tuesday evening, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Through the mail, please enclose a self-addressed stamped envelope. $8 spayed and neutered, or neutered, $12 male, a female. After June 1st, a $5 late fee. After September 1st, $25 late fee per household. Get your dog licensed, please.
You don't want to do that episode a few times tonight, so.
And again, there is a reminder for the town meeting on June 22nd at 7:30 p.m. And as Dale said earlier, you can go and see the budget on the website. Recommend that, so you know what kind of numbers we're talking about. And I think that's everything for
Is there any consideration of moving the town meeting to after? You have the numbers from the state, so you don't drag out a few people that come up for one meeting and then drag them out again for another meeting. Has anybody ever talked about that?
No.
It's in the town bylaws, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, it's set by town bylaw right now, but that can be changed to the town meeting.
Right.
I have been approached to move the night that we hold it on. A lot of people are not good with a Friday night.
What's wrong with a Monday? But I think it's more important to, you're gonna get so few people anyhow. And you know that the state isn't gonna come up with the numbers earlier that you move the town meeting back to where we have all the numbers, so you won't have to have two meetings.
Yeah.
Other towns have done it.
No, yeah, I know. It makes sense.
A lot of times it works out okay because we have all the zoning bylaws and all that stuff on the May meeting, and then we do the budget in June, so sometimes it works out.
Yeah. Well, I know recently, there's a couple of towns that had so many things on the warrant that they ended up going to midnight and then adjourning and having to meet the very next night to finish their charlton. It was just in the paper. So, I mean, there's drawbacks to a lot of amendments in one night too, but something to look into. I agree. And then I think moving the nights from Friday to midweek has been suggested. I don't know.
Well, it'll have to be done by bylaw at a meeting.
Yeah, it has to be done at bylaw. Yep. Change the bylaw, because that's what it is.
So you have to do right up the bylaw and bring it up for a vote?
Yep.
Does it have to be ahead of time?
Yes, it has to be.
Couldn't spring that one out on, on the
Are you gonna write one of those out too?
I was thinking about it.
What are you doing on Friday night? Come on. Show up at the meeting.
Yeah, I have no one.
You're doing nothing. I show up.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? Any business to come before the board? Speak up. Okay, I have nothing else on the agenda, so with no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. It's second?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.